March eighth, any changes, corrections, additions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from our previous meeting on March eights.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from our March eighth meeting. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. Report actions taken by the city council on planning commission items. Sherry?
Um, so the city council had no issue with the amendment to the two phases of the green farm subdivision. And they approved the amendments on those. They have requested further information on the parking, on the updated parking ordinance. And so that as of yet has not, has not been approved. There were some issues that were raised with Wilson Cove between the commission's recommendation and the time it was presented to the council. Those issues led to the city council tabling Wilson Cove, but since that time, city staff has met with, with the developers. We believe that we have those issues remedied and so that will go again on the next city council agenda. Regarding the, regarding the resolution for policies and procedures of the city council, of the planning commission that was in front of the city council. After, after much discussion back and forth on, on work sessions and, and the ability of the council to require work sessions, which based on our city code, they can't, they cannot do, that's up to the planning commission. After some back and forth on that, ultimately, the city council did not pass the resolution that would add the attendance requirement for work sessions. And so the policies and procedures for the planning commission remain the same as they have been since it was adopted in 2021.
Okay. All right. Review the public hearing process? You want me to review it?
No, this is actually Matt requested it be on the agenda.
Oh, excellent.
Sorry, I asked to just address that. We did have some feedback from the public hearings at the planning commission two weeks ago. A couple of things, we have some deficiencies we'd like to correct. First of all, one of the things that we're doing and we're getting it ordered, if it hasn't been ordered today, it's being ordered tomorrow. We will have some digital timers that will be in place. The policies by the city council is to have three minutes per person for, for public hearing comments. The planning commission does not have a set time that's designated. Generally, it's announced on that. We're, we're, and you have some latitude in the planning commission to extend that as necessary, as long as it's equitable to all people. Generally, what our policy is with this in the city council is a person has three minutes. Then if they have any questions, or the council or the commission might have questions, then that person may have another two minutes to extend and do that. With the, with the timers, we'll be able to time that. There'll be one right up by the recorder's desk for the person to be able to see without it ticking down right in front of them. And then we're going to have a larger one posted on that, that column back there. So the entire commission and council can see those when we're using those. One other thing that we haven't done in the past, and generally, the mayor or the chairman have read the, read the rules of a public hearing. And no offense, there, when we had a little bit of a mix-up and Andrew was running a little late and we had transition, so it just added to a little bit of confusion. We are, and if you haven't noticed, on our agendas, whenever there's a public hearing, we will be posting and saying what it's, what the requirements are, so there's no chance of missing those. We just want to be as transparent as possible and, and make sure that we can take care of that. Additionally, one other thing is, as, as members of the public come and, and provide their comment, one of the things is, it's their time to make their statements. There is a bit of exchange with staff and, and that with the gentleman for the last public hearing. And, and generally, that should not be the case. And we've reviewed that with staff and saying, you know, this is their time to state. And as long as they're doing it orderly, it's their time to make a statement. And that staff shouldn't engage with them unless the commission or the council instructs or asks for direction. And so, just a few clarifications that we put into place since that meeting. As you can tell, we've got the agenda item. I know you've got two planning hearings tonight and we don't have the digital timer in place, my apologies. Previously, there was an egg timer up there, I think that's gone missing.
Nope, it's still here.
Is it still there? So we'll go, let's say we will go analog rather than digital on this meeting. But I would encourage you to do that just to, just to make sure. And I know occasionally when there's, you know, a public hearing, only one person gets up, it, you know, it's almost like a tendency to let it go. You, your body has that option. You don't have to establish it. We've set it up in the agenda, so you have it. But if you see someone and the chair and the body want to say, we'd, we'd like to relax that requirement, as long as you're equitable in that to everybody, you're fine. But we're just setting that three-minute published time to make sure if you have a ton of people, they're not all wanting to discuss for eight to nine minutes apiece.
It says two in the.
Does it say two? Sorry. So, yeah, so you'll have two. So that'll make it quicker. If you want to extend it to three, you really have that option. The council, the council one says three. So, so we've got that published at two. And, but like I said, your body has discretion, as long as it's equitable. And so we just wanted to address that. There's a, there's a little bit of calls in about, about inconsistencies that. And we just want to let you know, as our support to you, we're going to make sure any kind of discrepancies on our part are taken care of. And technology will be in place, hopefully by your next meeting. So, any questions for me on those regards or that? So, we'll be working on that. Appreciate all our staff and, and working on that and coming in compliance with those as well, so.
I think that's great to have it on there.
Yeah, I don't know why we didn't think about that eight years ago.
It makes it easy. And, yeah, and, and we'll make sure if we aren't having a public hearing, we'll take it off so we preserve, conserve space. But whenever there's a public hearing, we'll be putting that on. At first, we tried to put it on with every public hearing to make sure that Darren remembers to read it with everyone. But we hope you can refer to that base one easily, so, okay.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, and as always, appreciate all your hard work and, and efforts and, and taking care of this important land use authority purposes of our city, so appreciate you.
Thank you. All right, next item agenda.
Can we, can I make a? I would like to see it consistent with the council if we can do that.
Oh, to do the three minutes?
I was going to suggest the same thing, yeah.
Three minutes is fine. I mean, the only time that can be an issue is when.
We have hundreds of people.
Right, and then would it be prudent though, who can offer, who can actually extend that time if they request it? It'll be the chairman to do that? Okay.
Yeah, but if there's gobs of people.
Right, exactly.
Wouldn't, so usually there's not gobs of people, so it just, yeah.
Yeah, just for consistency, I'd like, if we can.
I have no issues. Anybody else have an issue with that?
Nope.
I think having the timer will help because it's hard to like, then they can know when they need to wind down because sometimes we're like cutting them off when they're like, but I haven't given my final, you know, main comment, so I think that's nice that they can pace themselves and.
People get really nervous in front of us for some reason, I don't know why. We're really nice people. We're scary, but, yeah, I have a hard time saying my name in two minutes, so. Three's, three's great.
So do we need to make a motion to make the three minutes, or?
No, it's not on the agenda to do that, so we can't, but we can just, we can just, it's not a thing we need to vote on anyway, is it? I mean, we can just say, we'll probably do three minutes in the future.
It's not something that gets voted on by the commission as a whole. It's up to the discretion of the chair.
There we go, the chair says let's do three minutes.
If the chair says do three minutes, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, that is, sorry, that is one of the things, like in the policies and procedures that were passed in 2021. That's one of the things that, I mean, obviously, there's a lot of different things that the commission as a whole votes on. But determining the length of the time limit for public hearings is at the discretion of the chair.
So if we have like a full gallery here and people are lined up, I mean, there's been a couple that we could maybe say since there's so many, we're going to limit it to two. You know, because a lot of times they, they're just repetitive over the same thing that they're passionate about. So could we do it that, like that if we see that there's a lot of interest or?
Um, I mean, we can still keep the rules for, we can still keep these rules that are on here, like Matt said, that we'll put on every time, on the agenda every time. And then all we would need to do is, is just do a little modification that says the chair, prior to the outset of the public hearing, the chair will announce the, the limit on time. Or something like that, so that if there is a packed room, you can modify it as needed.
Yeah.
All right, item number six, public hearing to receive comment concerning amendment to the West Haven City sign ordinance. So before we go into that, do we want to, I noticed a big email from the city councilman regarding signs. I didn't have time to click on all the links and go through it all, so do we change anything on this, or is it?
Um, in your packet, you have.
The clean version?
And we'll start, we'll start doing this just kind of as standard practice. If there's more than just a couple modifications from one meeting to another, or if like in the case of the mixed use zone, it looks like it's completely reformatted. So you've got, you've got not only the clean version of the sign ordinance in there, but also a redline version, I'll showing you the changes that were made from the previous meeting's discussion. Because of the posting requirements for the public hearing, I didn't have time to fully integrate some of the comments that council member Saunders made at the last meeting. I have, I have reviewed them. Well, I mean, we've been having an issue with our email and everything in the world getting sent to the spam folder, so some of his comments had been, had been put in my junk folder. It actually has been a huge problem this week. But, so I've had an opportunity to review them. Some of the comments that he sent over are reflected in it, in this. But there, there are some additional comments that, you know, that we can approach a couple of different ways. We can, you know, incorporate, we can further incorporate them in, and I can indicate where those comments are, or where those things fit in and make comments on those and let you know the changes and suggestions that he has recommended. Or, you know, you can choose to let him present the balance of his comments to the city council when it comes in front of them. Because ultimately, they're the ones that adopt it, and either, either is acceptable. And just so the public knows, the council member Saunders gave what I will call expert testimony to the planning commission. He wasn't weighing in as a member of the city council. Signs are his business, and so he spoke to the commission as a businessman, not as a member of the city council. Anyway, so that's kind of where it went with the comments and feedback that he gave.
Okay, well, let's have the public hearing and then we'll go from there. I have a motion.
I'll make a motion that we enter public hearing. I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second to enter into public hearing to receive comment regarding the signed ordinance. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, we're in public hearing. Any member of the public who'd like to come forward, if you're online, if you'll please raise your hand. When you come forward, please state your name for the record.
Don't start the timer yet. Geneva Blanchard, thirteen fifty-two West ten fifty North. Okay, mine is kind of a question, which, based on what Matt said, you may not be able to answer, but maybe in your discussion you will. So, for our client that you guys are all well aware of, Honan Equipment, I just have a clarification question on section J of the ordinance where it refers to the pole signs. And it's item B where it says, "Commercial and manufacturing zones located within two hundred and fifty feet of the edge of the right-of-way of the following properties." So I'm trying to figure out if that's the road, or you're talking like the edge of the intersection and how that's clarified. Because they are technically on Wilson Lane slash twenty-one hundred. Would it be the intersection where nineteen hundred is because that's listed? Or are we going all the way down the road and theirs would be two hundred and fifty feet in their lot essentially? So that's my only comment, and you're probably not allowed to answer me, but.
No, we'll answer you after.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? We have two people online, I don't see any hands. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we, that we leave public hearing.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to leave public hearing on the sign ordinance. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we're out of public hearing. So, you want to answer that, Sherry?
Yeah, um, so there are different areas of the city where Wilson Lane and twenty-one hundred south are different roads. And then once you get west of nineteen hundred west, they, they're kind of the same thing, or they get used interchangeably. So, that, it's within, it's two hundred and fifty feet the edge, where the edge of the property is from the edge of the right-of-way. It's not from the intersection. And that's why it says edge of right-of-way, because, and that's not, and that's, you know, that's not the center line of the road, that's not even the edge of the asphalt. Because the right-of-way goes farther in. You know, so it's within two hundred and fifty feet of, of the property. So the way this is written, and this, and this is specifically written for, for certain areas that the city has anticipated to draw in, you know, national retailers, things that'll produce a lot of sales tax for the city, so that's why those specific things are written in there.
Well, isn't the property within two hundred and fifty feet of it anyway?
Yes, so therefore a pole sign would be allowed.
Yeah, I just want to clarify.
Yeah. So Wilson Lane's listed there and twenty-one hundred south because essentially they're the same road, but like she said, they're not always called the same, so. We're just naming the main corridors of the city that have a lot of commercial on them, and so.
Mr. Chair, can I add one other thing?
Sure.
The purpose of this is actually to limit, because there are other commercially zoned areas in this city where the properties don't fall within these parameters. And it's because the commission recognizes that, you know, freestanding pole signs tend to have a greater impact than a monument sign. And so they don't want to, they didn't want to broadly open it up to every commercially zoned property in the city. Just those along the major corridors.
Except four thousand, because four thousand is really a lot of residential, so we didn't put that in there.
Well, east of the canal.
Yeah.
Can be.
Okay, any other comments on this or changes?
Well, I think I'd like to eliminate some of these cross-references to the names. It starts to get a little cumbersome in there, like animated sign, flashing sign, and there's, you gotta see this or see that, height of sign, sign height, back and forth, under the definitions.
You want to go down them specifically?
Oh, well, sure. How long do we have?
Two minutes.
To nine thirty.
Three minutes, okay. Animated signs, a see flashing sign, and rotating or revolving sign. So you have to go over there.
Which page are you on?
Oh, I'm on the, what would it be, the second page of the redline copy, under one five seven seven five seven.
Oh, the redline copy?
Yeah, doesn't matter, it's still under one five seven seven five seven. No matter what color it is.
What's the kind of definition?
The clean version's in red, that's the confusing part, the title.
You don't want animated sign, see flashing sign, or rotating or revolving?
Well, it's, the references back and forth, like on the next page, it says height of sign. And then if you go to sign height, it says see height of sign. It just seems like we ought to pick one, rather than going back and forth and back and forth.
Well, is that because they're often called by different names, so we're identifying all the different names they may be called?
But I think somebody that's looking to put in something would find the thing that they're looking for and, I mean, I, I don't know, I'm just trying to simplify some of this stuff, because it's, gets a little cumbersome.
Lawyers that barely graduated law school.
I, I didn't say that.
That would be down at that end.
You, you pass the remark down to Darren so that he can say that.
That happened too fast for me to have passed it.
My problem with removing those references is then it leads to ambiguity.
See?
And so.
That's ambiguous, okay.
Well, when it says see the, the other definition, I mean, otherwise, I mean, under animated sign, we would have, if you want, we can have the same definition as flashing sign. But it needs to be in there, you know, it, it actually makes it a little bit simpler by saying, see the flashing sign definition. We do need to do something about the rotating or revolving sign because we don't have a definition of rotating or revolving sign.
That, I would actually just, I would recommend the commission strike the rotating or revolving.
So they're not allowed? Is that what you're saying?
Or you just don't have that comment in there?
These are definitions.
Yeah, just have animated and flashing. And I agree that where we can simplify, we should simplify. But what, what Amy said is correct. We have gotten stuck in situations. I have gotten in situations more than once, well, many times over the course of my career where somebody tries calling it something else. And even though we may, the commission may understand and staff may understand that it's the whole rose by any other name kind of thing. If we don't have specifically, if we don't have those specifically tied together, we run into a situation, if they choose to appeal it, because we don't have it defined.
Okay. How about the chart under one five seven seven five nine? We've got a few in here that don't have definitions.
And that's another thing, sometimes you have to define stuff so you cannot allow it.
So it's not on the chart, because we don't want it, but we had to define what we don't want.
Yep.
That's not in the chart.
Yep.
No, what's in, what's an institutional sign? Other than the place that I should probably be put.
Not sure we have zoning for that, though.
Lots of rubber walls.
So, you're saying we don't have a definition for institutional?
It's not listed in front of the chart.
Yes, we need a definition for institutional.
While we're at it, there's no definition for notice? Or public necessity. I, I think everybody knows what public necessity is, but. It's just not listed, that's all.
He's our new fine-tooth comb guy.
Yes, I'm not done. If there's blue tabs.
Keep going.
So over under real estate signs, the way this thing reads, and I know our focus has been on something totally different, but I was reading it.
What page are you on? How did you go now?
There are no page numbers, so I don't know. It would be under M, no, N, as in Nancy.
Okay.
Let's see, which one am I looking at here?
See, I can't find that, I can only see numbers, where to get in. Need a bigger copy. Mine says page twenty-one of fifty-nine.
I was going to say, mine's twenty-one on the digital pack.
I don't do digital. Anyway, primarily under number four, I think. Signs announcing an open house, says they can't exceed thirty-two square feet. That's almost ten foot by ten foot. Or no, six foot by six foot. But it says it has a maximum feet of, or height of eight feet. Does that include the posts that these things are on?
That is a big sign.
That's a real big sign.
Is that, sometimes election signs are that big, aren't they, like on a corner, six by, I'm just trying to think of big banners. Is that like the size of a banner?
Eight by four, aren't they? Thirty-two square feet is eight by four.
Well, I can see a big sign if it's a development that's going in.
Well, and you can add in just a little, it says with a maximum height of eight feet, including, including the post.
Well, under number four, this says, "Signs announcing an open house on the property where the sign is located may not exceed thirty-two square feet." If that's a house, that's a big sign.
Yeah, that is a big sign.
You mean a house for sale, is that?
Uh huh.
Okay, but if it was a sign for an open house for a development, that's not that big.
That's not what it says, though.
That's not what it says, it says located. It's on the property of the open house, it can't be bigger than.
But what if it's a property of a development, is what I'm saying.
But it does say that it's only for twenty-four hours.
Yeah.
Yeah, the development one's above, it says.
It doesn't specify.
I wouldn't want one in my neighborhood.
Yeah, it doesn't specify house or development, really, it just says open house of property.
Well, above it, it says, "Real estate signs announcing the location availability and/or development of a property." So in, and that's, it states those options, unless I'm misunderstanding what you're saying.
What you're talking about is in number three, signs announcing the future development of commercial residential.
And they can be ninety-six.
Ninety-six, we, square feet there.
Commissioner Wilson's actually is correct. Four is, four is a subset of N, which does limit it to real estate signs announcing the location availability or development of a property. That's saying like if the property is ongoing, like if the development is ongoing. You know, or is shortly.
Ford just deals with open houses.
It says, it says and/or. And number N says availability and/or development of property. So availability to mean would, to mean, would mean that it's announcing an open house in it.
That it's just a house for sale.
A house for sale, and that's just way too big.
Well, or a development of a property, sorry.
Okay.
Which could mean you're bringing in a whole subdivision.
Yeah, but that's three.
But it's only going to be twenty-four hours. That's the only, number four only allows the sign to be on there for twenty-four hours and that is it.
And that could be a property with like five acres with a bunch of frontage and a big pasture in front, that they might need to have a, a larger sign to get visibility that there's a house to set back in or something.
I mean, so it's no more than twenty-four hours prior to the open house and she'll be removed upon completion of the open house. So it's not like one of those signs is going to be sitting there for, you know, weeks.
Only have to endure an eight-foot tall sign for.
For twenty-four hours.
For twenty-four hours.
Twenty-four hours.
It seems large to me too, where you're only allowing the sale sign to be sixteen square. It seems large to me, too, where you're only allowing the sale sign to be sixteen square feet.
I don't know. I was just trying to get clarity.
Change it to sixteen.
I'll be fine with that.
And then you'll be happy.
Yeah.
Be huge, to sixteen square feet, yeah.
Maybe nice to keep it consistent.
Cause that's what it is above, I mean, that's the regular sign, it's only that big. Or can only be that big.
And most of the time, they put the open house at the entrance of the subdivision or to direct people. But it can't be that big, yeah, and usually they wouldn't put one at the house as well.
The one above, though, is, uh, for sale, and that one's gonna sit on that lot, right?
They have that.
So where it's, I think where it's twenty-four hours, like, we put these up for school all the time, it's not that big.
Eight by four.
It really isn't that big, but I, I get like I, I'm okay making it smaller.
I haven't either, I can't imagine someone putting them up, unless it's a big development company that just moves it from house to house.
It'd also be expensive.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, really expensive.
So I, I can't see an individual lot owner spending that much money for.
We just had one on Saturday, and we just had two at the entrance of the subdivision and one at the house, not my house.
But we can limit it.
Patio home, actually.
So that it doesn't ever happen, but.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't really care either way, I, I don't think it'll be, I don't think they're gonna have a sign that big and it's only twenty-four hours, so. Whatever you guys think.
Only hope, the last one I have is one five seven seven six zero. The first sentence says signs which require a building permit shall submit the following. Once we redlined it. Maybe applicants for signs.
What was the number again?
One five seven.
Seven six zero.
The next page.
It says on the clean copies, signs which require a building permit shall submit the following information as part of their building permit application.
Oh, but it says signs is the, shouldn't it say applicants?
No, because if the sign is big enough to where it requires a building permit. Or, you know, if it's being constructed and requires a building permit.
You could add applicants in there after permit.
I just never thought of that, I guess a sign would require building permit if you're putting footings and.
But I guess I get what he's saying, it's.
It's reading like the sign has to submit.
That sentence can be reworded to say the following information shall be submitted as part of any application for a sign which requires a building permit.
There you go, write that down.
Basically just flipping, it's flipping the sentence backwards, but it's not giving, what's it?
Well, it's not having signs come in to apply for.
Characteristics, I'll reword it.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
And we can blame it on the sign if there's a problem, cause they, they have their own permit.
We get through all the blue tabs?
Blue tabs are done.
Blue tabs are done, anybody have anything else? You have yellow line something there, is that the same thing?
I brought it up last time, I still, I still don't feel we need to require an address on signs.
Oh, yeah, that was the other one.
Don't think that, I think it's not necessary, and if somebody wants to put an address on, okay, but to require it seems, I don't know. I, I guess I'm not a business owner, but that seems a little.
I missed a blue tab, I'm sorry. I agreed with you Natalie on that.
Give me a chance. I just think it's unnecessary.
Requires it.
That's, I, that was my question when we left.
As far as I know, it just says you have to have the number somewhere where they can be seen.
Well, they would have it on their building.
Yeah, you have to have it somewhere so they can find you.
I know, but if the pole signs right by the building, it seems redundant, but.
Yeah.
If you can't find Hanan in an emergency, I feel sorry for you.
Well, and sometimes there's multiple tenants at a sign and they have different addresses, like, building addresses, like.
Right.
Like different numbers.
Mister Chair.
Yeah.
Uh, we have a sheriff's deputy here, it may be wise to ask him if it makes a difference one way or the other when they're trying to find a location, if there's the address on the sign.
Not putting you on the spot or anything.
So do you look to the pole sign to see the numbers, or do you just look on the buildings?
But most of the time you punch it in your phone, or is it like you get a directional, directions or?
Well, there you go.
Okay, sounds good. So I just.
Sorry to put you on the spot, it's just, I mean, when we're talking about emergency services being able to find it, just, they're here.
Yeah.
At least we didn't make you come up to the mic and do all that.
So, yeah, I don't think we should require that, if people wanna put it, they can, so. So we're ready to move it forward? With those changes?
I think Jeff needs to make the motion.
I'm confused with all the blue tabs that were in or out, so I can't.
I didn't write them all down. Sherry probably did.
Sorry, what?
You wrote all the changes they talked about?
I believe that I did my best.
Or do we wanna wait and do a clean one next time, or?
Um, that is entirely, oh, I have all the changes that you guys have talked about right now, I've got the, I've got the sign definitions that we need to add in, I've got the change that Commissioner Reed requested on the application process. And I will have the thing, and I have the thing requiring striking out the requirement that they put the address on the sign.
Just say what she said.
Yep.
Well, I don't know, I'm, I'm wondering if we should do, you know, if we should just table it like you were suggesting or saying you weren't suggesting, and, and look at it after this, the comments that we had from last meeting.
Whatever motion you wanna make.
I would, I actually agree with Commissioner Reed, um, only for the reason that where we're actually adding in definitions, and these aren't just, if it was just striking things out and some other grammatical changes. But where we're actually adding in definitions, I'm fairly certain the commissioner wanted to make sure that they agree with those definitions before sending it on to the city council.
Okay, so you can make a motion to table.
I moved to, that we table, what is it, item number, something or other here?
Seven.
Seven.
Number seven, um, to consider, or on the amendment to the West Haven City Sign Ordinance.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second to table the West Haven City Sign Ordinance, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, it's tabled. All right, item number eight, public hearing to receive comment concerning an application rezoned property located at thirty fifteen west, thirty-three hundred south from A two to R two, Rick Sandberg, is here, come on up. Before we do the public hearing, we wanna know what you wanna do, so.
Um, so I put my application in to go from A two to R two to subdivide my property, um, for the point of selling a chunk of it.
Um. How big is your property?
One point four acres.
One point four?
And so I just wanna sell point four of it and keep the one acre that has the home sitting on it.
Oh, so you have two point four acres there?
No, sorry, one point four, I wanna sell point four.
And keep one acre.
And keep one acre.
Okay.
And the one acre is the chunk that the current home is sitting on.
The part that's highlighted is the point four.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So since my application, um, I did a little researching and it seems like a lot of people have done this, but it kinda comes down to the general plan and what that fits, but I found a little discrepancy in that, that, um, the master plan, I guess, from twenty fifteen shows that property's R two, um, there's an amendment from twenty nineteen that shows it in R two. And then another amendment from twenty twenty that shows it changed to a, an A two. Um, I found the meeting minutes that you guys had, uh, was a very detailed list of why that amendment came to be, and none of those were a reasoning for why that changed from R two to A two. Um, and then, you know, the, the master plan that you guys have on your website shows that property's in R two. And then all the property around that whole area is, everything adjoining that piece of property is in R two currently, so. I'm not quite sure where that little sliver there needs to stay in A two, or my little sliver.
Okay, does anybody have questions for him before we do a public hearing, we'll have you come back at the end of the public hearing, too, and if there's any thing to answer, so.
Okay.
No questions this time? Okay, we'll have you sit down, and then we'll do the public hearing, then we'll have you come back up.
Okay, thanks.
Good. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we enter public hearing.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second to enter into public hearing for a property rezoned located at thirty fifteen west, thirty-three hundred south from A two to R two. All those in favor of entering into public hearing, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, we're in public hearing, any member of the public who'd like to come forward at this time, may do so, please state your name and address for the record, if you're online, please raise your hand.
Hi, George Lamar, thirty forty-two south, twenty-five fifty west, uh, since there are time limits on this public hearing, uh, let me know if I go over. I promise I won't. Uh, while there are many valid reasons for deviating from the general plan, some of them might be the general plan revisions haven't kept pace with exponential growth and unattended consequences of that growth. Uh, perhaps a newly elected city government comes in, and that general plan doesn't reflect their vision for the city. Or during a public hearing, you have concerns raised by neighbors or the community at large. Two of those, uh, which are two of the three, uh, parties that, uh, property rights are to be considered during rezoned decisions. Um, I'm not sure any of that exists here. What I am concerned about is I have a number of neighbors who have very similar s- uh, situations with, uh, lot sizes over an acre. Uh, I'm concerned that, uh, this would be a precedent that would in turn grow and I'd end up with double the density in my neighborhood that I currently have, so, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone online? I don't see anyone, so I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, we leave public hearing.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second to leave public hearing, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, we're out of public hearing. So, maybe, Alaka, did you do this report? You wanna come up for a second? So, I don't have my general plan pulled up here, is it, but thi- this is the general plan you put on the staff report here?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So it has it A two or A one?
Has it A two?
Has it A two, yeah.
A two.
Yeah.
Oh, the one that got emailed?
Updated one.
Let me look at the updated one.
Has the original one had some discrepancy on A one and A two?
Can we put that on the screen?
For the general plan, or the staff report?
Staff report, that's right, we got one. That looks the same to me.
So this top one is current zoning.
Oh, I see. Oh, excellent, okay.
Table on the first page.
So its current zoning is A two, and the general plan has it as A two? And, is that essentially the reason staff recommends against it, is cause the general plan still shows it as A two?
Yeah.
Any other concerns?
Um, no, not really, I mean, just that the properties right next to that is all A two. So it would be consistent, but, open to any comments or concerns or opposition to that.
Okay. What is, to the south of it looks like slews, to me.
Looks like what?
Slews.
It's a wetland, I think it's a wetland. Okay, so where exactly is the property on the colored general plan maps?
Little arrow, there's a little.
Wedge there.
Oh, wow, I better get some better glasses.
Yeah, so, look, look on her.
For some reason, it was highlighted and that, I don't know why it's not showing like that, but.
Skinny orange arrow.
Okay, so it looks like to the north is two point five, am I misreading that?
Nope.
Nope, you're correct.
Okay. Right, okay.
And then it butts the park, this kinda the road to the park and the wetlands.
Yes, the road's right here, the park's right here.
Yeah, it's next to the park.
So what could he, like, if, if this was granted? It would, like, if it's not granted, he's not allowed to put another home on his one point four acres, correct? Cause they need to have forty thousand square feet?
Yeah, if it's approved and.
Unless it was an accessory dwelling.
Right, I mean, he can still do an ADU.
Yeah.
If he wanted to.
Um, just not sell it as a separate property.
Right.
So if the point four acres was rezoned to R two, what would that allow, they'd only have to have twelve point five?
No, the one point four would have to be rezoned, and then he would have two properties to an acre. Right?
Or is it?
Yeah.
So he'd still only be able to put.
Yeah.
He'd still only be able to add one building to that.
Right.
Okay. Could it be a twin home?
Not for R two.
Got it in a R two, okay. But minimum lot, or, yeah, it would have to.
It would, the minimum lot would have to be seventeen thousand square feet, which this would comply with.
And then you also have the problem of, an R two would be completely isolated from anything else, I mean, there are no other R twos that are, you know, are touching that piece of property.
Isn't there an R two point five touching it to the north?
Um, but that's not an R two.
No, it's smaller.
But it does, it's not an R two, it's, I mean, and you have that road that's separating it, so, it's I mean, one, it doesn't match the general plan, but two, it's just, it'd be, you'd have spot zoning out there in the kind of the middle.
Can Commissioner, or, Chair Dean, can Sherry touch on the difference between the general plan versus, and kind of the guidelines of the general plan versus the, uh, actual zoning versus the, um, what's it called, the other?
Master plan.
The master plan. On those three differences, just for, and just to see what, what those dictate and how they're enforced.
Um, so, I mean, to start off with, and to be totally frank, general plans are not legally binding. There is a significant amount of work that goes into them. Um, there is a lot of time and effort and thought and public involvement. Um, if, it's a document that the city says, this is how we're gonna grow, this is where we're gonna be. And while it is not binding, when you get requests for rezon that go against what is, like, what the outcome of that deliberative public process is. Um, it's generally not recommended that you make recommendations or decisions in violation of that, unless there is substantial evidence to demonstrate that an incorrect decision was made. Um, so, while they are not binding, um, they are a strong policy document and a strong statement of the city that says these are the areas where we're gonna grow, and this is how we're gonna grow. Um, so I, I, obviously I can't speak to, to what was determined on on prior, um, general plans, um, you know, and I, and I don't deny that over time, cities will say, okay, we think this is gonna be half acre here. And then it's, for whatever reason, um, you know, sometimes it's the rate of growth, sometimes it's just a different policy decision, cause you have different policymakers in, in the elected and appointed bodies, sometimes cities, you know, I don't deny this, sometimes cities change that, but, um, to to grant a request that goes against a usually pretty neat, you usually will need strong evidence that supports that either a, in an incorrect decision was made in designating how that land would grow in the general plan, or you need really strong support, um, of circumstances that couldn't be anticipated.
Okay, thank you.
Did that, was that, is that what you
Yeah, no, that's, that's, that's perfect, yeah.
I guess my question is, in the anticipated general plan, everything across the street, including those one, two, three, four pieces of property are going to be R two point five?
Yes.
Sorry, I should ask you.
Across the street, yeah.
Sorry, it's a bad habit.
It's okay.
I think it'd be easier to look at if, if the park wasn't there, cause I think you've got the park that kind of splits up. He, they're kind of, this, um, it, lot is between the R two point five and the R two, and then you've got the park, so it kind of, it's hard to kind of get that buffering.
Right.
And another thing to recognize too is that some of this is reflective of what the property's already zoned and the property's already developed. So across the street from this property, um, is, um you know, you've got Aspire Point, you've got Highland Phase Two, and you've got some other things that have gone in there since the time that this map was adopted, so sometimes it isn't, sometimes the future land use map, um, isn't so much reflective of what the city thinks it's gonna be. But, well, it is, but for areas that are already developed, they're not gonna change the zoning designation from what it currently is, so the future land use map is actually a mix of two. It anticipates areas that aren't fully built out, it anticipates their zoning, but it also reflects the actual on the ground zoning for properties that are already developed. So that's why, um that's why you'll see the R two point five that's on the north side of thirty three hundred, because that's largely what that area was developed as. Um, there have been some requests that have come in since the time this map was adopted. Um, so the areas that are between thirty three and thirty six, and also that are west of of twenty seven hundred, there are some properties that have come in since the time that this map was adopted to be rezoned, that have been rezoned to R two. Um, so, yeah.
I guess my question is, those specific four properties across the street that are in A two in the top map and then are in R two point five in the bottom, does that mean that they are anticipated to become two point five, or that they've already been approved to be two point five?
I think it's that they're anticipated to become two point five, because what you have there now is there's one house in the middle of a bunch of fields, yeah.
Yeah, I've looked at them, but
They're not rezoned.
They're not rezoned yet, no.
The plan doesn't automatically rezone anything.
No, that's I mean, my thoughts on this are kind of in all honesty, it seems like the A two zone, that strip of A two zone is, based on the general plan, kind of the existing zoning, that, that strip of A two seems out of place, because you have R two point five to the north, you have R two to the south, you have commercial to the west, and then you have the park to the east.
Well, and even one of the A twos has been changed to A one.
Well, that's the existing zoning right now.
What?
That's how it is zoned right now, but in the general plan, that A one is supposed to go to A two, or is yeah, is anticipated to go to A two.
Yeah, and sorry, if I could, or, you can go ahead.
No, you're okay. I just wanna add some additional information that I have gotten since this packet went out. Um I have been contacted by Weber County. I don't ha- I actually don't have as much heartburn over this as I did originally when Alaka first brought it to me. This is the reason being, um we have been contacted by Weber County, um, regarding a development request that has been submitted for the corner of thirty the southeast corner of thirty three hundred and thirty five hundred is unincorporated county. We have been contacted since the time this application came in and the staff report was done and all that. We've been contacted by Weber County about a project proposal they have for the unincorporated county on that corner. Um, it is a, if it is approved and it doesn't have any approvals from the county as of yet, but if the county approves it as proposed, um there will be commercial space and apartments on that corner. Um, they have asked to sit down with Matt and I, um, you know, and Alaka didn't get the email, but I'll pull her in on the conversation as well. Um, they have asked to sit down and talk with us and get our feedback on it. Um
So where are you talking about on that upper map? Are you talking about the white area?
Right there.
Right here.
That little red part that's kind of like a puzzle piece?
Okay.
Comes out that
It's, there's a red line that goes around it.
Okay.
It's the southeast corner of the intersection. Um, so, I think that there are going to be property owners in that area that um, are going to choose to develop in the county. So I think we're gonna end up with a little more dense area around that intersection than what we originally anticipated. Um, not saying that it's a good thing or a bad thing, but it, I, it's, it's
The reality.
What?
It's the reality.
It's the reality. Um, because, you know, we already know that one of those projects has been proposed to the county. Um, so I I'm a fan of the general plan, I'm a fan of the goals that it lays out. Um I
Well, with that in mind, it doesn't seem feasible to have this be A two on the general plan anymore.
That's what I was gonna say, to me, that A two is what looks out of place.
Apartment complex.
Right.
I mean, there's no buffering, it's
Yeah, I mean, the other thing to consider is that you have two homes there, which wouldn't be considered of those people, but there's a lot of fields there still, and if apartments do go there, then just the trend that's gonna follow is that all that land is probably gonna want to be sold off and
Right. And the city actually is in the process of, I think the city council approved some of the right away acquisition um, last week at their meeting. Um, because the thirty three hundred, I mean, you can see on this map, the dash lines, it's gonna curve down and come into thirty six hundred. Um, you know, and anytime a city, the city does something like that, you, when you have the level of traffic going east to west, um, you know, I, I think just given what's gonna develop in the county and what the city needs to do with the roads and whatnot over there, um, to facilitate the ease of traffic and to pull some of the burden of traffic, I, and where it's surrounded by, where you've got the city park on one side, I and given, like I said, what has come in from the county in the last three days, I actually don't have heartburn over it, cause I think this is one of those situations where since the general plan map was adopted, there are circumstances, policies, directives, development that has changed. And I don't believe it's realistic to continue to think that that area is gonna stay A two.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree.
Parcels too.
Because nobody's gonna wanna develop one acre lots next to apartments.
No, I wouldn't wanna live in one of those.
Well, and isn't E two even bigger than one acre technically?
No, it's forty thousand square foot minimum.
Also, I mean, I wanna be cognizant of the
Lot A two, yeah.
Of the neighbor to the west there, but based, looking at where this house is placed anyways, if he's only taking off point four acres, the only place the house is gonna go is on that eastern
Next to the city park.
Yeah, next to, between the existing house and the city park.
I have a question on this. Is this the power lines that run through here that dotted with the red on each side?
Yeah, the green
Bottom drawing?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with it.
Um, this request, the power line easement doesn't go through their property, it goes to the west of it?
No, no, I, I understand, I'm just trying to get reference points, that's all.
I'm sorry, I thought you were asking, I'm sorry.
No, no, no. I've actually driven down there to look, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anything to add?
Nope.
Okay, we'll have him come back up. We did.
Did we?
Yeah, we had the public hearing.
I just have a question. Where would you place, it would be one, another, um, residence? Do you have an idea of where on that property you were considering?
That the house could go? Yeah, within my application, I had placed a couple options of
Look back.
Uh, up to five thousand square foot footprint of a home could go within all the guidelines.
I think I saw it in the ori- it's in the original, right, probably? Okay, let me go back.
Yeah, I've also talked to Taylor West, your guys' sewer department, culinary, irrigation, all that, and they all have said, signed off on it.
This is the one you're talking about, right?
Okay.
Yes, yep, within that red line, yeah, it's a piece of property.
Let me see that. So it doesn't have the structure, but just like within that area?
Yeah.
Within that, oh, yeah. Yeah, he's just showing that that size of a house would fit.
So isn't your narrative, our current home is on the one acre site? That doesn't mean you're planning on splitting this and then moving, are you?
No, no, I just wanted to make it clear that the house is sitting on the acre.
I just read stuff. These guys know already.
Even if he did, that house would still need to be roughly in that same spot, so.
Yeah, he could go further west and make it a larger parcel, but not
Right.
You know.
I kinda was feeling one way, but I think this new information kind of puts a different context.
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna be spot zoning because if that apartment complex goes in there, like, it sounds like it will, cause the county's allowing high density next to us on that west side, so
Well, the A two will feel like spot zoning.
A two will feel like spot zoning.
I think we need to look at that.
It's kind of isolated because of West Haven's property. It could've, you know, to the east could've been an R two as well, but it just happens to be that West Haven's property's to the west and the south of that, so it does, that's what makes it isolated.
Yeah, I think if the park wasn't there, it would make, this would make this a lot easier, cause it would look a little continual, we wouldn't have the break in it a little bit. I think with the boulevard going through there too, I mean, they've got, they've got those big parcels, I think we're gonna have to look at the gen- I mean, I think we're gonna be doing the general plan? Looking at it this year?
Yes, so
Yeah, I noticed you guys have an R, RFP out to have a, the general plan completely re- looked at, so it could change a lot of this anyway.
Yeah, we have to do that every few years, so it's a chore, it's
I'm sure.
Alright, I'm ready for a motion. You guys ready?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. Um, I'll make a motion that we recommend to the city council that the property located at thirty fifteen west, thirty three hundred south be rezoned from A two to R two for the applicant Rick Sandberg.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to recommend to the city council the rezon from A two to R two for applicant Rick Sandberg at thirty fifteen west, thirty three hundred south. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your homework.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, item number nine, uh, discussion on, oh, number ten, sorry. Discussion and action regarding the mixed use zone.
Can I tell the applicant one thing really quick?
Yep, go for it.
Usually there's back to back meetings, like, one week it'll be planning commission, the next week it'll be city council. This won't be in front of the city council for two weeks. March is a weird month and there's five Wednesdays. So, it'll be the fifth of April that it'll be at the city council.
Can I ask you a quick question too? There's, maybe I'll place where, there's a subdivision application to get this actually subdivided through you guys, you know, is that, do we need to go through that process next?
Is that what?
To do is one lot subdivision, he'll
And I don't know if that's for mass developments, but you guys have a
Yeah.
Subdividing application?
Um, it's, whether it's one or a hundred, it's the same application.
Okay.
But if it's a single lot subdivision, the city will process the preliminary and final at the same time. Especially where there's no infrastructure improvements that have to be done. Um, we'll just need like a will serve letter from Taylor West Weber and whatnot, but Alaka will get you that information tomorrow.
Does that Alaka, if it's accepted at the city council?
Right, make sure you get the rezon first before you spend your money on that.
Yeah, I mean, but, like, you can be working on it and have it in your hand, and then if the city council grants it, you can turn around the next day and bring in the application.
Okay.
Yeah, we just can't accept it and do anything with it until action has been taken one way or the other.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Alright, mixed use zone. We've made lots of changes.
Would you like me to give some context on the changes?
Sure.
So the biggest thing that came out of the last meeting, um, when we were talking about this, um, is that it seemed like the discussion was, okay, yeah, we want mixed use, but we want the city to sort of control what things come in for mixed use. And so, um I proposed to the planning commission that I would create kind of a menu for people to pick from. And so that's, I mean, there were a couple, you know, technical grammatical changes, um, but by and large, um but by and large, the change that was made in here, um, is just basically on the first page. And it, and a little bit on the second page, but, um but by and large, I gave you guys the menu. I, I kind of took some things that that were on that list, that said that it may include, but it's not limited to.
Right.
I did my best to take those things and, and turn them into what I believe the intent of the commission was. Cause this gives the city the ability to control, um to control what the open space looks like and to get what we want out of it.
I like it. It's clear too, it's, it's simple and clear.
And the reason under the commercial section that there's not a section number is cause I'll just wait, there's not a section number because I was just gonna wait until we get the final clean draft and then plug the section number in.
So that's really the only thing that's changed, is we've cleaned up the ambiguity there
Yeah.
And listed what is okay.
Yes, and it says, okay, if you're gonna talk about the open spa- if you're gonna try and claim the open space element, this is what you have to do. The residential ones, this is what you have to do. Um, commercial, this is what you have to do. Recreational, this is what you have to do. So it gives them a list that they have to choose from if they're going to, um try and say, our components are gonna be recreation, residential, okay, well, this is what you have to have, this is what you have to give us.
Awesome, I like it. Um, Amy, I have a question for you. On the very last section, enforcement and fines. Do you like that section? Does it get enough teeth? Is it enforceable?
Yeah, it's enforceable.
This seems kind of vague to me, I don't know.
Which part do you feel is vague?
Well, it's just like, well, if they could enforcement decides, then you gotta do it within forty eight hours, but, or as they may determine, but there's no real fines set out, no timelines, no
Well, I mean, when it says that, or such later time as the code enforcement officer may determine, you know, Dan has a great deal of, um leeway when it comes to this stuff, sometimes sometimes it takes longer than forty eight hours.
Right.
He may see, you know, there's, cause we've had that happen before with other code violations that, um you know, the code says one thing, you have X amount of time, but knowing full well what may be going on with, you know, say they had to
Bulldoze something?
Yeah, and, you know, we had some sort of major flooding emergency and there are no bulldozers available for, you know,
Yeah.
private, you know, renting, that sort of thing. I mean, he has the ability to look at it and say, okay, um
Okay.
Yeah, but there's, there's nothing about fines or anything, that's in the heading. I guess that's the question, is
yes, he has the right to say, you gotta have this gone in this time, or what?
Or is there another code that delineates fines, or?
There is the, I mean, the only reason he would, we would require like immediate remediation of it is if it's, there's an immediate like public health, safety, welfare.
Right, but what if he gets a month to fix it, what happens when it's not fixed in a month, that's our question. Oh, I mean, you can, you could, he could cite them under like the nuisance, um, section. So do you need to put something in there that those are possible consequences? Uh, it just seems like it's open ended, like, yeah, he's, he can determine the time, but it doesn't really say then what happens.
Um, it would be very easy to put in there that says, um, upon determination, we can tie this back to the nuisance ordinance fairly cleanly. And just say, upon determination that a violation exists, the code enforcement officer may declare such violation a nuisance and follows remediation procedures outlined in the West Haven zoning code, blah, 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 blah.
I like that.
Yeah, I like that.
This is what happens when I have a snack and caffeine up right before a meeting, I can think off the top of my head.
Sweet, have more caffeine. I have one other thing in here I wanna put in here. I wanna require twenty foot driveways whenever there's townhomes or anything like that, because they always come in here and they always lie to us. And say they're gonna have twenty foot driveways and then they don't when they're built. It drives me crazy.
If we don't say that in the motion, if we talk about it in the discussion.
It's gotta be in the motion.
So it's gotta be, because I remember talking about these specific things.
Yep.
And then, then they don't do it, we're just like, well, how do we hold them accountable for that, like?
Well, if we have it in the ordinance, that'll hold it, and then the building inspector can say, this isn't twenty feet, bulldoze your building and put it back.
There's a couple of different things that you can do. Um, so right now, the way this is written, um, is on page three, one fifty seven, three thirteen, it says, specific setbacks and other zoning or de- design criteria, blah, 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 shall be established in development agreement.
Right.
So you can do a couple of things, you can add a subsection C that says, um, or yeah, I would actually add it under site development standards. Um, you know, that says at a minimum, you know, all, regardless of any agreements that are outlined in a development agreement, at a minimum, you know, uh, single family homes, townhomes, any, anything which has a driveway as a means to a garage, whether it's single.
A private drive, yeah.
Yeah, shall have a minimum of twenty foot setback to the garage door.
Yeah.
Cause sometimes, I mean.
If there's a garage, what if you have a garage?
Or a carport.
Well, then they don't need a driveway?
Well, they just park a car somewhere. Carport, something.
Well, okay, so a carport, I mean, we have minimum depths for parking spaces.
Okay.
Um, so with carports and stuff like that, or covered parking for like multifamily housing, covered parking for townhomes, we have a standard parking lot dimension that's nine by twenty. Um, where the ambiguity has come in in some situations is when it's not a parking stall. I mean, yes, you park on a driveway. But there, that's where some of the disagreement has come in. So if we clarify the, and say, if you've got a garage, regardless of how many bays the garage has, the garage shall be set back a minimum of twenty feet from the property line, from the common space, cause some.
From the sidewalk at least, or the curb.
Yeah.
So it's not sticking out into the road.
Right.
When they have a full sized truck.
Right.
Or over the sidewalk, yeah.
Yeah, I can, I can add that in.
Yeah, I would.
I would add, I'll add it in under site development standards. It does, you know, it's really interesting, um, this isn't entirely unrelated, but I remember thinking and looking when I first put this together that, um, I actually really appreciated that whenever these site development standards were put into place, we actually require that the garage is set back farther than the front plane of the house. Um, I can't speak for any reasons why that appears to have not historically been enforced in some subdivisions, I don't know. Um, but I'm glad we have it in place because in our traditional subdivisions, not only do we have accommodations for larger vehicles, cause what that'll do is that'll pull the on-street parking off the street, which frees it up for, you know, emergency traffic and whatnot, um, but also because it doesn't look like we have a neighborhood of garages and somewhere in there, there's a front door.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, that's true.
That, I mean, that's a personal pet peeve of mine, but we do have it in code. And we have the enforcement mechanism, um, but I don't know why it hasn't been that same, I don't know why that same principle hasn't been adhered to in some of these mixed use developments.
Well, cause the MDA got to supersede it, you know?
Yeah, and the MDA is supposed to have setbacks.
Sometimes I think the setback for the garage was delineated and somehow it didn't get enforced, you know?
Yeah.
So.
I, uh, I still have a little bit of concern over the open space option in the in this, like, I feel like it could be a cop out for developer if they just say, yeah, I'm gonna put two apartment buildings right here and then leave the
Detention pond.
Space in the middle open. And just put a trail, yeah.
Would you like to set a minimum size?
Maybe either minimum size or maybe have it set some, I don't know if we can set some requirements for what that has to have, you know? Because I think it could be something good to have that open space. And again, I'm not opposed to having open space, but in a mixed use like this, where you're having high density and then just a spot of non-developed land, it would look weird in this type of zone, I think, but I get, I get the i- idea of it, but I think there should be some maybe development standards of what has to be there, you know? A trail has to be there.
It's conservation of natural resources, so what are you gonna put there?
I don't know, but it's something like, it has to have a trail, maybe like a paved trail, maybe like a little hutch or something for stopping or resting or, I don't know.
How about aesthetically pleasing? I mean, it could be desert landscape.
I guess, I guess I don't know that I have a solution to it, but I feel like it could just be a big.
Oh, but what he's saying is a real possibility.
So, but I'm just saying you maybe need to remove the natural resources because natural resources can be a weed field.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Why don't we say, cause we, we've allowed them to give us land for parks, but we don't always want land if it's not big enough to actually have a decent park in, so we could say something to the effect that if the city parks department accepts it, can we say something like that, that it would be open space the city would receive, or?
Over in Hooper, kinda west of fifty one hundred, there's an area back there that's just kind of a big open space and there's like a trail, a paved trail where you can bike and walk around that, but there's nothing there, I mean, I guess it's kinda grass, but it's a nice place to go walk and ride your bike.
Yeah.
So we gotta put that language in there, it needs to be a nice place to go bike and walk.
Go bike and walk, yeah.
Be a weed patch.
I guess, I guess I don't know that I have a solution, but I just, it's a concern of mine that there's gonna be this patch.
I completely know people who would do that.
I can put together some more stringent standards for that. Because I understand your concern and I understand what some people will argue counts as open space. Um, so I can, I can put some more stringent standards together and make sure that it says, you know, open space is not the same thing as common area that is maintained by an HOA.
Right, yeah.
I mean, even adding that sentence and.
Or just empty land that is left over with construction debris on it at the end, you know?
Can this be doubled as a retention pond though too, is that considered the open space?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not open space either.
Okay.
A detention pond.
Okay, cause people will do that, they'll build a park in the middle of a retention pond or and then call it a day and dual purpose it.
And I would think it has to be open to the public, this open space.
Yes.
So we have to state that.
In that case, does it have to be on the exterior of the property, or do, if you put something in the middle of an, of an HOA, it's not really gonna be considered public?
Depends on how it's laid out.
That will actually be, uh, done by their choice because they're not gonna want the liability of having publicly accessible stuff in the middle of their project, that, what's the word, self-monitoring?
Self-governing.
Thank you.
There you go.
Apparently the caffeine just wore off.
I had a snap too, it's all good.
Um, but they're gonna do that by their own choice, because they're not gonna wanna put it in the middle of something, because they're gonna, yeah, they're gonna want it as far away from their private stuff as possible so that they can keep what they've put in just for their residents to themselves.
Cool.
I'll put some more information.
And if it is publicly open space, would they be required to say, put a sign up around it that this is public space?
Yes, um, so that's under recreational.
Okay.
Three I six, I can put the exact same sentence under open space.
Yeah.
Yep.
I have a grammatical question. Go figure.
Oh, we have.
Why are we using I, I and I instead of A, B, C after these numbers?
Roman numerals, four or less, right?
Yeah. It's what.
Well, I know they're, I know what they are, but normally it's A, B, C after a number, at least that's how I learned it in school. It's, I'm sorry, it's a visual thing.
There's no one right or wrong way to do it, it'll get, the numbering on it'll get changed when we send it off to the codifiers anyways. So they'll pick, they'll put whatever their numbering format is. As long as in the draft, it doesn't matter if it's big A, little a, big A, little a. As long as the flow of it is in order, the codifier's gonna end up changing it to whatever their formatting is.
I'm sorry, it's just something that happens with my eyes, I can't help it.
Well, cause some places you have one and then A and then you have Roman numeral.
Right.
So it's not, it's not the same all the way through.
Right.
And on most of that stuff, the reason that I don't get fussed about it is because we don't do our own codification. If we did, then we would have a standard format that we follow, but as long as the indentations and sub paragraphs are are clear that one is a sub paragraph of another, really it doesn't matter because it all gets done when Charisse and Emily, what?
It all comes out in the wash.
Yeah.
In other words, it's not our problem.
And I actually had to learn to let that go pretty early on because I will mess with the formatting on stuff till I'm blue in the face. And I had to learn to let it go because I realized that I was sending stuff off perfectly formatted and then it would get changed.
Of course.
So that was a fight that I chose not to fight anymore.
Some things you just have to let go.
Yes.
Yeah.
Sometimes that song does apply.
Took me fifty years to learn that.
But the cold bothers me, so.
So young guys, learn it now, just let some things go.
Let a lot of things go.
Trust me, you wanna learn to let things go.
As much as you can.
I can't.
Especially with your kids. Alright, anything else on this?
But this is fabulous, without a doubt.
Yeah, why didn't we have this eight years ago?
What?
Why didn't we have this eight years ago?
You mean, where was she when we?
Um, well, I apologize, cause I made that like the second week I started working here, cause I got sick really quick of flipping back and forth between stuff. Um.
Now if I can do one for the animal ordinance, I think that would be really, I'm just saying, one for the animal ordinance would be.
Yeah.
You say aminal.
Aminal.
I, yes.
Hey.
Love it.
Um, I will say another thing, like as we go through this process, there's gonna be some overlap of revising huge portions of the city code with the general plan. Uh, Matt and I actually need to sit down and talk about potentially revising what order we're gonna do stuff in. But one of the other things that we're gonna work on is instead of having, we're gonna do something similar to this. Sorry, I should have asked you if I could take that off your keyboard, um. We're gonna do something similar with all of the land uses, so that rather than have the permitted and conditional land uses in every zone, we're gonna have one set of land use definitions, one set of land uses, and we'll have a matrix where you have the land uses down in a co- in a column, the zones across the top in a row. And then under everything for every land use, it'll say whether it's permitted or conditional in every zone. Instead of having all these disconnects between permitting and conditional land uses, we'll turn it into a matrix, so there's one land use chart. And you can look at the land use and see where it's permitted, conditional, not permitted, in every zone throughout the city. I think that'll make things a lot easier for you guys, for council, for staff, for residents. So, and it kind of was an outgrowth of that, cause that I mean, it's a little bit of a pet project for me, but it also really needs done.
Yeah, making it easier and simple for people to understand is always good.
Cause right now, if you were to print out a list of all our land uses, you would see some very odd things and it's like fourteen pages long.
Yeah.
And there are some inconsistencies where it's permitted in a less intense zone. Um, did you know you can manufacture jet engines in West Haven?
You've got a lot of open space.
There's, there's some very weird things if you really dive.
Just can't test them, cause our noise ordinance will.
I know, right? Can't be here if they're gonna work, but anyways, so that's, that's something that's a similar, sort of a companion project um, that I started looking at doing when I put this zoning thing together.
Cool.
Yeah.
So, um, are we allowed to talk about the work session at all?
Um, well, I, the only thing is you need to act and either table this or recommend it to city council.
Yeah, let's table it, don't you think?
I'll make a motion, we table the mixed use ordinance.
I second.
I have a motion and a second to table the mixed use ordinance, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, it's tabled. So I've had lots of feedback on the work sessions being canceled. I just wanted to know what your guys' feelings on those were.
I've kinda gone back and forth on it, to be honest, um, at first I was like, well, it's nice to not feel to have to do it, but in some circumstances, and I think the last meeting was kind of point of that, where we had everything kind of in a row before we entered into a public session, um, would have been beneficial, even though it's redundant. But having everything in order would have helped in that situation, where we went till nine thirty at night anyway. Um, and we didn't have a work session before that, so I, I'm actually for having work sessions, because and speaking as one of the junior member on this board, along with Mr. Reed over there, I think, um, I'm not speaking for him, but I, I, I'd kinda was on the fence and some, I'm back into, I would like work sessions if, if possible. I understand people's work schedule is kinda tough, I'm not opposed to pushing it back a half hour or an hour and starting at six, if that works. Um, but I believe the benefits of a work session are, are ness- necessary to make sure we have a clear and concise message to the public for during the actual session.
Um.
Can we move this meeting back?
Well, um, I actually think that we need to wait until the next meeting and actually have this as a discussion item on the agenda.
But it's the chair's call, so the chair can, just asking for feedback for his call in the next meeting.
Just make sure you guys don't make any decision.
No, it's just my call, so.
You can put, yeah.
Yeah, you can, but they can document my remarks for that and then.
Yeah, I appreciate that time to kinda have a dialogue, it's a little more intimidating in the council meeting, I mean, it's recorded, it's a public meeting, it's the same thing, but it feels like we can have more casual questions that we maybe might feel a little more guarded to ask maybe during the council meeting, I felt like they were a good learning time to kinda learn and ask questions, um, sometimes it's hard to fill that full hour, we find ways to. And when we used to have the code enforcer come, we always filled it.
Oh, yeah.
But I feel like maybe if we condense what we were, you know, that's kinda my suggestion too, to maybe throw out there even a half hour.
Couldn't we start at five thirty, but if that was a. Couldn't we start at five thirty, but if that was a really short meeting without much on the agenda, you could call it and not have it. We've done that before, where we said we're not meeting.
Would you have to call it though? Like, would you have to notify?
Of not having a meeting?
Um, what we could do is, because everything is due two weeks before the meeting. Um, we pretty well have the agenda set two weeks before, and what we can do is we can. Once the deadline has passed and we have things on the agenda, um, we can send it off to the chair. Or whoever's gonna be the chair at the meeting if Darren's not here, and then they can make that determination. And then when the public information actually goes out.
I think that's good, if we have four agenda items, we probably aren't gonna need one, you know, but if we have the two pagers like we've had in the past.
Or four ordinances we're redoing or.
You know.
Yeah.
My, my thought on this too is if there's a public hearing, I think it's necessary, I'd like to have some information, but if there isn't a public hearing. I don't know that, I think anything we talk about, I would want to have in the, the public. Planning commission meeting, like I don't want anything that doesn't pertain to us needing back knowledge before a public hearing. I want that saved, because the one, the one session that we did that, all of the information was shared in the work session, and then we got to planning commission. And everyone was here to listen to what we were saying, and oh, we already had that discussion, we voted and we're done, and so. I, I, I get both sides, I get.
It looks bad.
It looks bad, that's what I think, and so. So my thought is in, in transparency, in, in looking at transparency. I don't think that the work session should have that huge discussion, like it's, we should talk about things that are on there, but that huge discussion needs to be saved for planning commission. So I, I guess I still don't know when I'm saying that, but, but I, I'm just trying to convey my thoughts on that, that if it's a public hearing.
Say it again.
Or say it again.
That's one that feels redundant.
I, I think what, what, what the work session is for is to determine what does need to be brought up in the, in the, in the actual public discussion. So we, we don't go in there just having all these discussions there, but the discussion, the work session is public anyway.
Like would've been good today, like for instance, just as an example, uh, the knowledge that Sherry got about the Weber County development. Like would that have been something that would've been appropriate to maybe discuss?
I actually would not have shared that in the work session unless.
No, I thought it was perfect today because.
It wouldn't have been appropriate to share that information without the applicant there.
But maybe there's something like, maybe not that particular, but you're like, oh, you know, this is something that's coming up and. They've just got the right of ways now for the boulevard, and so that might be something we wanna think about.
Um, that, again.
Is another thing?
That again is another thing that, when you're talking about an application that somebody has submitted, I don't. Cause I've actually thought about this a lot too, I actually don't think it's. Up, I mean, cuz work session is public. But I actually don't think it's appropriate to talk about pending applications outside of. It's a public meeting, but there's, but work session is, but. Because sometimes what get dis- gets discussed in work session influences. What the commission will decide an hour later, I actually think we need to be really careful not to discuss pending applications in the work session. Because ninety-nine times out of a hundred, the applicant is not at the work session, and there's not an opportunity for them to hear. The concerns, if it's, and if it's ordinances that we're working on. Absolutely, I can see that being appropriate for a work session, um, because that is. I mean, and I think there's gonna be, as we get into the bulk of working on the general plan, and as we get into stuff like that. One hundred percent, that's the appropriate time for work session, but I don't think it's appropriate. I would discourage the commission from discussing pending applications in work sessions.
Yeah, that's, I think that's, I think.
I agree with that, it is a fairness issue.
Yeah, with ordinance discussion, yeah, and so when there's those on the agenda, then we have a work session.
And we may go longer in our general meeting, in our planning commission meeting, but that's okay, because the public is there. And they're there to respond and hear what we're saying.
But you see too, I mean, we have one left online, we have the deputy here. One, one who knows what we're doing anyway, a member of the city, so, I mean, you know. It's more casual, I think, toward the end of this meeting anyway, too.
Well, I think if we had work sessions, we could illumi- eliminate some of these blue tabs.
They won't get eliminated, they don't, they'll just come earlier in the evening, cuz this is what I will say about the length of the meeting last time. It would've been the exact same length had you had a work session or not, it just would've gone till eight thirty instead of nine thirty. There is no difference to the length of the meeting, it's just a matter of when you get out of here.
I could've had a potty break.
But, but what actually helps is if you have things like your blue tabs, you email Sherry before the meeting.
Like Sherry was very responsive to mine, I was just trying to make sense of something that I probably should already know, but it just wasn't computing.
Cause that, that was something that when we were working on the animal, um, ordinance, the animal keeping ordinance, I would ask. The council or the commission, hey, send me all of your comments so that I can give you, you know, an updated version for us to talk about at the next meeting. Which helped a great deal for you guys, you know, for the commission at the time, because then. Everything that, you know, all the grammatical errors and, and stuff like that, was already incorporated into the red line and, and. You could already see it in the, I mean, you, you know you're gonna want it, cuz you've reviewed it, so.
You just have to email those blue tabs, that's what we're saying.
Yeah, you, you email them to Sherry and then.
Email blue tabs.
Drop in and write a note.
I kind of enjoy listening, I kinda like it.
Picture and email the picture of the blue tab with the highlighted things.
That would be too modern, I can't do that.
No, he needs to, uh, maybe just drop off the blue tab thing too, Sharon.
Or just send an email and say.
iPad like yours where you can write all over it.
I just sent him an email and say there's a discrepancy between A one and.
He does an email, have you got that?
Well, if you, he does two email, we've seen emails from him, and they fixed it, so.
Yes.
I was teasing.
Um.
He said it was too modern.
My request.
I don't think Sherry wants all of that stuff, do you?
I, some stuff, I, if it has merit, I will, like.
Nope, you don't want it, or nope, you do want it, what was that note meaning?
She's torn.
I, I, I do want feedback, I do want input. My request is that you would give it to me a minimum of twenty-four hours before the meeting. Cause there's no way that I can get it the day of. And have it all formulated, cuz some of, some of it's gonna take a lot of research, some of it from all of you. This isn't, this isn't indicative of, of how I feel about comments from anybody. Sometimes the questions that you guys give me, I have to look into, sometimes there's. Like legal issues that we have to weigh out, that I have to weigh out with Amy, sometimes I just don't have time to get to it. So I would request a minimum of, of twenty-four hours whenever possible.
Well, the flip side of that is, if you research it the day of, I, I don't always get those emails in time to look through them the day of the meeting.
Right.
I mean, that's just not gonna happen in my day.
Right.
So.
Yeah.
That's the other reason that, uh, they need a little more advanced time, or you're playing catch up when you get here anyway.
And with minutes, any corrections on the minutes can be handled before, as long as she gets them. More than a day in advance, right, of the meeting, she can just fix them, and then they'll be correct.
Well, and if we need to, to give you more time to review stuff, to give back, I mean, yeah, by standard practice. We just send out the packets the Thursday before. We, we can, you know, I can talk to Sharice and we can see what we can do about. Maybe sending the commission out some things. Um, a little bit earlier. Cause I mean, the six days, the Thursday before, that's a minimum. Um, so, you know, I can talk to Sharice and see, and see what we can do to try and get some stuff put together. Sometimes, in the past, we've been, we've tried to be a little bit. Lenient sometimes with somebody that gets something in, but maybe doesn't quite have everything. Um, you know, we've had, we've tried to extend a little grace on stuff like that, if we need to. If we need to kind of limit that so that we can get the information to you sooner, so you can get some of this feedback. Um.
I think Thursday's fine, unless you're out of town or something, that gives you the whole. That gives you five days, four, three days, four days to look at it and still make a comment.
Yeah.
So.
And if there's too many emails, then you start getting lost in which one is which and.
Yes.
Which one am I supposed to look at?
Um.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, that's all good info.
Like the ones you sent today, I, I didn't even see them till during the meeting, about the signs.
Oh, right.
So.
So, yeah, and that was one that, you know, I got Sunday night, needed a little more context and then couldn't get to it till this afternoon, but. Um.
But you didn't bring that up in your blue tab.
Oh, I missed it, I'm sorry. Was it a spelling error or?
No, no.
The video thing.
Video you sent.
Oh.
Yeah, that was good.
I haven't, I had time to watch it.
I want one at night though, do you have a night video of that?
Well, I could drive home that way.
From different distances, so I can see how bright it is.
I just had a question about whether or not we wanna make.
Is it a spelling error?
The video thing.
Video, well, my only comment to that would be, um, if you've ever had kids have to go out and manually change signs on schools, it's a nightmare.
Yesterday they could've done it, and all that, or earlier today and all that snow, why not?
Yeah, yeah.
I did notice they did put the knits and the lumens in for signs, and that goes a long way with, with, with having that for the video wall, that's how you measure it. If I'm gonna look at the expert in the audience, that's how you measure a video sign with, with knits for, for brightness, is that correct?
Yeah, that.
Could you come up to the microphone?
But it said there was foot candles might be a better option for me.
You read it. Thank you, uh, do I need to state my name and all that?
No, do you, do you need his name, or do you know who he is?
Okay.
No.
Um, so, I had sent some information to Sherry and it ended up in her spam, so. I reset that tonight, and unfortunately I couldn't get here during the comment section, so I appreciate. That I had the opportunity to talk a little bit, but I did find some brightness standards, I reached out to a expert in the, in the. Industry that deals with it all the time. We're, we're very specialized, we're just kind of the off-premise, you know, billboard type signs, and so. Um, we deal with it a little bit on our, our digital signs, but they already come preset for. You know, to dim at night and all that. And so usually, what I was saying last time is usually where you see the big offenders is on the off-premise, so I was kinda looking for something. That, you know, some guidelines, he sent me that, I, I sent it out, I don't know if, all, I, I reset it tonight just to make sure. Um, hopefully, you know.
We have it, I just haven't the time to go through it either.
Check yours, you know, but there is, there is apparently some better ways to measure it. And it looked like, um, from the information that he sent. There's some pretty clear standards and easy to measure, and in fact, some equipment that the city can get. Um, to measure, um, the brightness standards, which is kinda what. I, I like, I like to see, you know, the brightness standards regulated more than. What type of sign, you know, because I think that's really what you're after is. You know, not being a nuisance to, to the neighbors or whatever, so.
Or the drivers.
Yeah, and, and it can be, I mean, especially the LEDs, I've seen them, they, if they don't dim at night, if they go with. Cheaper company that doesn't have that ca- capability, it can be blinding, and. Generally, you'll see that with the on-premise type signs, so. I did send those standards, um, some of it might be a little bit overkill. Um, but I'm happy to answer any questions throughout the week. Sounds like we're gonna be, you're gonna be tabling that anyway till the next meeting, so.
Yeah, we tabled it, so.
So, um, I did have some other comments. Um, regarding definitions that I sent out to Sherry and Amy, so.
Okay.
But yeah, I think there are some better, short answer, better ways to measure it even than the knits, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Can we, can we discuss that now? I, I just have, I just have a comment on, if anybody read the foot candles versus knits, but.
I read it.
I haven't read it yet. Well.
Well, yeah, I think you gotta talk to, or look about code enforcement about it, to see how they can measure it. Because that will matter, you know, how they can measure it, whatever.
Light output?
Mm-hmm, that's gonna matter what we put in the ordinance anyway, right, so.
Um, what we would need to do is we would just need to get a measurement device, we have that for noise.
Right.
Um, so, it's just a matter of.
We've been through that.
Yep.
Well, what it, what it pretty much said was.
We had to get a new one, the old one was bad.
Foot candles is a little bit cheaper to.
To measure.
To measure, and knits is, is good, is a little more accurate, but it focuses more on daylight. You know, you, it allows you to measure during the daylight as well, but that's typically not when you have the issues. So it said foot candles might be an option, because even though it really is only super efficient at night, that's when it matters. Doesn't really matter as much during the daytime, and the equipment is less expensive.
Okay, there you have it.
I think if we can discuss this next week.
Yeah.
Sherry, did you tell us last time that schools were not regulated by this, like they're under their own?
There are certain things that we can regulate schools on and certain things we can't. Um, I was actually just reading something about schools and where cities can and can't regulate them today. Um. There are still certain requirements we can put into place, they're not completely exempt from everything.
I don't feel like they put in the brightest signs, because the cost is so enormous that they put in, they get by with what. With what they, not that they're cheap, but just that, the cost to go to the brighter signs is like a big jump and.
Yeah, I'll put into, I'll make sure that I have, um. Uh, an answer for you on that at the next meeting, cuz I, there are some things that we can and can't do with schools. But they're not exempt from a lot of city code, I think they're just exempt from making. Uh, from having to get a building permit from the city.
Thank you.
Let's do item number eleven, have a motion?
I make him to adjourn, I second it.
I have a motion and second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
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 We are adjourned, thank you everyone. Thank you, deputy.
Question for you.
From the, from the nineteen twenties.